Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh's absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, January 10th, 2023. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, January 31st, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments? Anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. Resolutions D through G, we do not have need for an executive session, so it could include adjournment. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh has joined us. The motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll move to the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Noxious Weed Control Authority meeting held on Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments? Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Noxious Weed Control Authority Board about an agenda, about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to one resolution, resolution authorizing the county weed superintendent to sign and serve notices on behalf of Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we have a presentation and approval of the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority's 2022-2023 annual reports from the Nebraska Department of Agriculture. And with us today is Mr. Michael Reed, Douglas County Weed Control.
Hi. Good morning, Chair Borgeson and board members. Came down here right at nine o'clock to get started, so I don't have my presentation loaded before the Zoom. So what I will do...
Those on Zoom, could you please mute?
Can I, should I load it now or should I do it in the future? So, I was told by IT that I could, I would need to wait to do it another time.
Okay.
The presentation, so I will do that. I'll just do it verbally. And the board has received my weed control plan for this year and reports. So as part of that, there's an outline of the number of notices, 10-day notices we've issued. You just approved a resolution that allows me to issue 10-day notices on behalf of the board. I issue 10-day notices for two different instances. One is if the weeds are over two feet tall, 24 inches tall. And the other instance is when there's noxious weeds growing on the property. And noxious weeds are designated state noxious weeds. Those are invasive plants that the state has designated as harmful towards agriculture or any other capacity. It could be, it could be that it's harmful for the environment, for the natural resources of the state. So, early on, they designated mostly agricultural weeds. The last few weeds that were designated were aquatic weeds that impact our natural resources and aquatics. So, in town here, we're primarily focusing on the terrestrial weeds, although some of the aquatic species do impact our wetlands on the western part of Douglas County, so Valley, Waterloo area, things like that. First off, over the last few years, it's been very, very difficult to hire summer temps, seasonal temps. And I want to thank Kent Holm for working with me on raising the, our wage for our summer temps. So this past year, I was able to, I hire five summer temps every year. And so we're able to not only handle all of those noxious weeds, but also all the nuisance phone calls that we receive from the public every year. So I'd say June is our busiest month. We're handling, you know, several hundred phone calls just in June alone. So, you know, some days it's more than double-digit phone calls, you know, upwards of 15 to 20 phone calls a day on nuisance weeds. And the nuisance weeds are handled by jurisdiction. So for nuisance weeds, I handle everything that's outside of the city limits or incorporated areas. And for noxious weeds, I have the whole of Douglas County for that. So thanks to Kent, we're able to hire on five summer temps. We handle all of the roadside noxious weeds, so it doesn't impact the adjacent landowners. And we can issue those 10-day notices to landowners on private property and address those noxious weeds, so it doesn't impact those landowners next to those developing areas. One thing that I want to talk about real quick is... So those 10-day notices we issue, landowners have the ability to control those nuisance or noxious weeds on their property. We give them those 10 days. And if the landlord doesn't take any action, then the county can go on the property and resolve and take care of those weeds, whether it's physically removing them and controlling them with mechanical or with herbicides. So within a few weeks, I will have before the board a number of different liens where weed control services were done on private property. And we've issued the 10-day notice. We've issued a bill, which would give them two months to pay. And then those will go on as liens on the tax liens on the property. And so those will be adopted here in early February, so the board can look forward to that. And those are paid off when the, at the treasurer's office every year along with their taxes. So those weed control services are recovered that way. Outside of the city limits, I want to focus on the lower plat weed management area. And whenever I do those liens here in a few weeks in February, I will supply all the slides I had for the weed management area, so I'll bring it back to that. But this past year, in the lower plat weed management area, which is a group of counties along the Platte River, there's 10 counties along the Platte River, we've been doing projects since 2003 downstream from Columbus. Again, I'll have the map and everything at the February meeting. So we've had projects every year focusing on protecting the waters, focused on the Platte River itself, but also the tributaries of the Platte River. And we've had projects every year. This last year was one of our biggest grants. Typically, it's around $60,000 to $70,000 grant. And this past year, it was $397,343. And that was due to an increase in the Noxious Weed Program Fund for grants for riparian areas across the state. So I was part of a group that testified in front of the legislature last year with Senator Hughes, and it increased from $706,000 to $2.7 million. We're looking to sustain that funding this year. The increase from $706,000 to $2.7 was due to some recovery funds, so it was a one-year appropriations from the legislature. And so this year, LB 218 introduced by Senator Ibaugh will keep that funding. Right now, it's proposed anywhere from three to six million, so there's kind of a moving target for that. But I would ask the board to consider their support. I would personally like to see that bill supported. I'll go down there and testify on behalf of the Nebraska Weed Control Association, which I serve as the president of that group, and have also served as chair of the Governor's Riparian Task Force for this year as well. So going into my second year, I'll be testifying in support of LB 218. So with that, that's my report for this year, and I will supply the slides in a few weeks. Yep.
That's fine. Thank you, Mike. And again, congratulations on representing your group so well and being recognized at our annual meeting in December for your presidency of the group, so...
Thank you, Commissioner.
So with that, any other questions or comments for Mike? All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, is there a motion? Oh, we can still approve it without the slide, so...
Definitely, yeah.
Need a motion to approve and adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll move to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, January 10th, 2023. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, items A through R. I have been notified that they would like item C held over until January 31st, as well as item Q laid over until January 31st. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Boyle.
Yep, just looking at items M and N. Approval of a three-year contract with Project Harmony to meet the federal grant entitled OJJDP, Reducing Risk for Girls in the Juvenile Justice System. And then N is an approval of a contract with various organizations to also address field trafficking strategies to address the criminalization of minor victims of sex trafficking. More than anything, I just want to make comments of the importance of this type of work. I think too many times when we look at especially young females in the correction system, in the juvenile justice system, a lot of it has to do with these types of conditions. And I think it's very important that we start to draw that out, make it very clear. This is not just for girls, though. This is for all children. And so, you know, those that are boys or identify otherwise, too. So more than anything, I just wanted to bring that to light, that we really need to do a lot more work in this area and that there's a huge need for it. And just to know that there are efforts being made locally to address the federal requirement. I think that's a step in the right direction, but there's still a lot of work to do.
Any other questions or comments? Please vote. Oh, on the consent, do you want to talk about? Do you want to talk about an item on the consent agenda? Okay.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'll limit it, I guess, to item N, however. The general idea of continual funding by federal grants and federal dollars and COVID dollars implies that we are not governed by a local board here in Omaha, in Douglas County. And there's a lot of people that feel like there's supposed to be a republican form of government for every state, which means there's a separation between federal and state authority and control. And yes, you have rights that are separate from the Constitution, from the federal government, but here you go going to them for a lot of money, which kind of comes out of my pockets one way or another. And we citizens that believe in enforcing the Constitution, as we swear to every day, every meeting, feel that we should rely less on the federal government and more on ourselves, and listen less to the federal government and more to your citizens that elect you. What we're concerned about is the continual rush towards socialism, which is not foreseen by our founding fathers. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, I might note, I thought our new assessor was here as well, but our new county engineer is in the audience, Mr. Todd Fitzher. And we welcome you not only to the county, but to the board meeting today. Pretty easy day. Nobody had any questions for you. All right. And I don't know if you wanted to say anything while you're here, just hello or whatever. You're more than welcome to.
Todd Fitzher, Douglas County Engineers Office, 15505 West Maple. I was just here in case there were any questions. And I am very honored and pleased to be standing before you today in this position, and I look forward to serving with you. Thank you.
Welcome. With that, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, our recognition and proclamations. I'm going to move these around just a little bit. We have two employee recognitions. One employee that is here, Raquel Salinas. And could you come forward, as well as Ms. Jane? She could come with. And we also have the Treasurer, John Ewing, on Zoom. We are recognizing Raquel for her retirement and worked for 28 years within the Treasurer's Office. And I know that John wanted to say a few words, so go ahead, John.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Raquel and Jane, good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to take a few moments and recognize Raquel for her exemplary customer service for 28 years in the Douglas County Treasurer's Office. Raquel was an institution in South Omaha for 28 years, providing great service to the citizens of Douglas County as well as her fellow employees. She was a leader that I'm very proud to have worked with for 16 of her 28 years. She also provided translation for citizens for a number of years during her time as an employee, even before bilingual pay was a part of our contracts. So she is the perfect example of a public servant who gave her very best to the citizens of Douglas County every day. We're proud of her. And Raquel, I wish you the very, very best in your future endeavors. So thank you on behalf of the Treasurer's Office and the citizens of Douglas County.
Thank you, John. Honor and speechless.
Ms. Jane, did you want to say anything?
I just want to thank her for her years of service. 28 years is a lifetime. And she was a great employee. She still, we take her back if she wanted to come back. But thank you. Thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the board, congratulations, and do enjoy your retirement. You're well deserved. Thank you for your service to Douglas County. With that...
Thank you.
Thank you, John. There's also an employee, Gerard Brennan, who worked at the county's office for 41 years, county engineer's office for 41 years. He is also retiring. So, I mean, my goodness, 69 years between the two of our employees that are retiring, that's pretty big. So with that, is there a motion to approve those recognitions? Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And Raquel, if you could come forward, we do have the resolution for you, and you can just walk through the line here and shake our hands while we give you the resolution. All right. With that, we do have a proclamation declaring January as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. And I will read the resolution here. Whereas each year in the United States, thousands of men, women, and children are victims of human trafficking and are deprived of their freedom, human rights, and dignity. And whereas in 2007, the U.S. Senate formally named January 11th as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day. This was followed by a proclamation by President Obama on January 4th, 2010, naming January as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And whereas President Joe Biden has proclaimed January 2023 as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, reaffirming his administration's commitment to protect and empower survivors of all forms of human trafficking, to prosecute traffickers, and to bring an end to the human trafficking in the United States and around the world. And whereas human trafficking takes the form of forced labor, sex trafficking, and involuntary domestic servitude in the victims of lured, forced, or coerced for the purpose of commercial sex, debt bondage, or forced labor. And whereas anyone can become a victim of trafficking, while women and girls are the primary victims, survivors come from all backgrounds, race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, or economic status. And whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of the definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas increased community education on identifying human trafficking along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board does hereby recognize January 2023 as the National Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month dated this January 24th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Friend? And I don't see Sergeant Brett Shragi on Zoom, but he had given me some information about our human trafficking data from 2022. And so I'm just going to list a few of the data points here. And also, for folks to know that within the Omaha Police Department, human trafficking is worked on by the Missing Persons Unit and the VICE Unit. And what they do is they identify the victims through tips and reports and high-risk behaviors. So in 2022, there were seven convictions. Now, these convictions ranged from six and a half years to life in prison. The majority of the sentence fall between 10 and 20 years. And in 2022, excluding the life sentence, the average sentence was 155.5 months or just under 13 years. So there was a total of six confirmed juvenile victims that were tied to these cases. And all these victims were females. But as Commissioner Boyle said, there can also be men and young boys involved in this crime as well. So right now, they're working on the seven cases that started in 2022. They consist of the six confirmed juvenile victims, two adult victims, and confirmed suspects at the number of 12 confirmed suspects. They've made four arrests. Most of the sex trafficking cases appear to be in smaller networks that are more local, which was, again, kind of a surprising stat that he offered. Although one does appear to be kind of a larger network that stretches across multiple states. But they're just beginning that investigation. Many people assist. There's many partnerships they have. Homeland Security, FBI, Project Harmony, Boys Town, just to name a few. But the average age of the juvenile victim that they worked is 15.5 years. And the average age in 2022 was 16.8 years old. And so just from those stats alone, we can see the importance of us staying vigilant about human trafficking, continuing to build the awareness and working with the partners in our community to eradicate this horrible crime. So with that, any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments? Anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. This is kind of old business, but I guess I need to bring it up again. Not to interrupt your meetings, but you saw me walking around the room again, listening to the different speakers, because you need a new speaker system. You need to repair it. it. Every speaker is a little bit different. I should not be able to hear your speakers behind you when I'm sitting at that chair. When I walk around the room, I can hear you better on all the other speakers. It's fine where the deputy sits, and it's very loud back there in that back room. Not quite as loud over there, not quite as loud back here. But I have a really hard time this morning hearing you, Mary Ann, and the rest of them, I'm not sure, I haven't heard them much. I usually don't have a problem in the morning. In the afternoon, it's worse. The other point on that is I'm not real sure if these speakers are new. These are addendums, maybe. They're not the same as those. But when you have somebody on the Zoom, it's a lot louder because they're on that. No problem hearing it. It's blaring right down at me. So I don't know, I never paid attention before with those were there or not. But there is a difference. Some of the difference is because you don't speak up at the microphone, set up at the microphone. Some of the other difference is the guy that controls it, he can turn the lights up or the volume up. I've noticed in the city council, at times, they don't even have the light on. And that's part of the Open Meetings Act, is we have a right to hear according to the Act without a lot of difficulty. Final issue is, under the Open Meetings Act, you're not required to sign in ahead of time, et cetera, in order to speak or whatever. But I wonder about, are all those people listed up there today? Are they speakers? Are they going to speak? They have their name up there. You don't ask the people that are here from the audience, which by the way, there's very few citizens that are not employees or not on the agenda that are here today, or usually. But I'm not required to put my name up there, and neither are they. So isn't that sort of unfair to other people? Are they getting some benefit that the other citizens aren't? Privacy matter? Why are all those names up there if they're not on the agenda? Just some of the rules that you didn't insert into the new rules for '23, which as I understand, are the same old rules of '22. Thank you.
Louise? You have to unmute, Louise.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. Louise, keep in this, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I wanted to let you know that I am considering some Nebraska laws that need to be on the books. I'm looking through your resolution, and I don't see the one that I'm thinking about, which is that somebody needs to provide specifics on agreements for buying a home during a private transaction, like a rent loan from a private owner to the prospective owner. I know somebody that signed a rent loan lease agreement, and there was a motor cessation scheduled on it. So the guy was thinking he was going to buy it for $150,000. But the terms of the agreement, after every, after 30 years or whatever, he was going to end up paying $400,000 for a home that was valued at $150,000. Private owners aren't banks. They don't, they're not financial institutions. And that's why he would want to have a private, private agreement, because somebody might not be able to get a loan from a bank because of their economic status or their, their credit rating and other conditions that a bank has to look into before they can give out loans. I think that maybe you, you, this board as experts in, and on property, can provide a resolution at least, if the state doesn't want to pick up this issue. You can provide a resolution so that the community knows what kind of specifics should go on a private transaction for a home, a residential property. Or maybe next year, get one of the senators to provide those specifics so that people aren't being bilked. That's very important, especially during this century, that people do not get bilked. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to committees. First are the Finance Committee reports, the Budget Report, and the Monthly Fee Report from the County Clerk Comptroller. Next is Human Resources. We have the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Services as presented. And then we have a number of legislative items for resolutions, resolution supporting. LB 129, which is the State Intent Regarding Appropriations to the Department of Health and Human Services for Medicaid Nursing Facilities. LB 130, Create the Medicaid Nursing Facility Services Budgetary Program. LB 131, State Intent Regarding Appropriations to the Department of Health and Human Services for Medicaid-Assisted Living Facilities. LB 317, Change Provisions Relating to Inspections of Real Property by County Assessors. LB 337, Change Provisions Relating to Disclosure of Patient Information Under the Mental Health Practice Act. LB 381, Adopt the Mental Health Wellness Act and Authorize County Sales and Use Taxes. LB 420, Require the State to Pay Counties for the Cost of Office and Service Facilities Used for the Administration of Public Assistant Programs. LB 551, State Intent to Appropriate Funds to Certain Counties for Long-Term Care Facility Operations and Services. LB 570, Adopt the Overdose Fatality Review Teams Act. LB 612, Appropriate Funds to the Department of Administrative Services. And LR 1CA is a constitutional amendment to require the legislature to reimburse political subdivisions as prescribed. These are all legislative items for support. And do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think this will be a surprise to my colleagues, so I won't, I won't go, you know, too deep into this. I just wanted to, I hadn't got a chance to talk to any of them prior to this, but I've either read, I've either read, there's 12, there's 11 bills here on the support side, there's one on the, on the resolution opposing side. And I've read either all the letters of intent, or in some cases, the entire legislation. And the, the fact that I could sit at a, at a kitchen table, there are six people in my family, and I could sit at a kitchen table at any given time, if I had all six people at home, go through every one of these, and we would not find agreement. Now, I would imagine I could take these seven people on this commission, this board, and we could sit at a kitchen table, break bread, and talk about every one of these pieces of legislation, and we're not going to find agreement on every one. So I don't really know what else to do, other than start pulling bills and debating them, and we're not going to do that. But in light of all that, there probably are, I'm looking at at least two bills on the support side. And we'll get to Resolution B, the opposition of the levying an inheritance tax. I probably just won't be in total agreement. So with that in mind, I think I will, I will abstain to the entire package in A and probably do so in B. So again, I'm not trying to irk people or get sideways. It just, this is some pretty in-depth stuff. And there's some really good bills in here, from what I've read, but there's some of them that I just wouldn't support. And so anyway, Madam Chair, that's all I really have. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to comment? Larry?
Thank you. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. When I think about this, I wonder, does this really tell a citizen, this part of the agenda, whether you're for these laws, again, these laws, and how does it affect me or another citizen, a taxpayer that has property taxes, et cetera, or has a family they may want to leave money to? I sort of get the feeling that you're the bear in the room or the large guy in the room down there, when we only get five minutes if we get that much at the podium, only on the days they get a hearing. But you're a lobbyist lobbying probably more for your benefit of the county than for mine. So we, I think you really ought to be transparent and tell the citizens what that means about my inheritance tax bill, or are you against it, or are you for, for it? You want me to keep more of my money, or do you want to take more of my money? That example. I know that doesn't sound real nice to you, but this really doesn't tell us a whole lot. And I think the Open Meetings Act says it should tell us, give us some readable idea of what the discussions are, or what you're doing with that. So please, maybe in the future, define for the citizens on the website at least with an attachment, that I, the last item there above other, I guess it's B, what that means to the citizen. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I was reminded by our staff who, who does the work on these legislative items, although I don't have the resolution, he just, oh, here it is. Just so for the record, LB 317, LB 337, LB 381, LB 570, and LB 612 are ours, are our Douglas County legislative bills that we put forth, asking a senator to carry on our behalf. The others are legislative bills that staff have put forth, asking us to, as well, put forth our support to it and work with our lobbyists and senators for a positive passage of those. None of these bills have a hearing date as of yet, but I just wanted to state that, again, those first five are our Douglas County legislative bills that we asked a senator to carry on our behalf. Some of the others down below are those that staff have asked us to put forth to support. So with that, no other questions or comments? There was a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioners Friend and Morgan abstaining, all other commissioners voting yes.
We do have one legislative item for, to oppose, and that is LR 23CA, the Constitutional Amendment to Prohibit the Levying of an Inheritance Tax. Again, this would put it in the Constitution and prohibit us or the state from imposing an inheritance tax. And I, I just want to state for the record that we've had conversations about this for many, many years. And I don't think you'll find one commissioner or one supervisor across the state of Nebraska, let alone on this board, that would say, we like this tax. What we're asking the legislature to do is if they're going to rid us of this inheritance tax, then we need a replacement source. And that seems to never be in the conversation, which is very difficult when we as counties only have property taxes to rely on for the many, 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 many mandated and unfunded mandates that the state imposes upon us, as well as the shifts in responsibilities from them to us that they impose on us. So while, again, I don't think we, we like necessarily the inheritance tax, it's a tax that produces revenue for the county, and if they're going to take it away, then I think that they should replace it with some sort of other revenue. Or again, take away the mandates and unfunded mandates that they seem to impose on us. So with that there, do we have a motion to oppose? Is there a second? Motion, motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Morgan?
I was going to ask a couple of things. One is not pertaining to this bill exactly, a statement. We are going to lose approximately $2.5, $2.6 million with the payment in lieu of taxes that change that'll be taking place, and I want to be sure Joe Lorenz or Lori correct me on that issue if I've stated it incorrectly. The other thing on the inheritance tax, and possibly Joe, and I've talked about that, and he may make a statement on this. My understanding is that inheritance tax is more not on a family living here and their children or that kind of thing. It's to someone that you might have a friend that you decided to leave the money to that lives in Oregon or somewhere else, if I'm stating it correctly. And Joe, I hate to put you on the spot, I'll leave Lori alone for a while, because she just started, but you might comment on those two statements I made, please.
Yeah, Commissioner Morgan, you're right. As we look at this, you know, within Douglas County in a typical year, there's 1,200 cases that come through probate where there's inheritance tax involved. And so, you know, 1,200 cases in a county of 575,000 people means that, you know, it's typically less than 1% of the population is being impacted by inheritance tax. And if you look at it, the inheritance tax is only being paid really by wealthy estates. There is, you know, minimums and things like that. And the other point that you made is also correct, is that these people tend to, you know, be very wealthy and distribute a lot of their money to different friends and relatives, a fair proportion of which live out of state. And so then they get taxed, but, you know, those people are not considered residents in Nebraska. And so this is all, you know, people never like taxes, as Commissioner Borgensen said, but in terms of people who really come in and hate the inheritance tax and aggressively opposed it, it's nothing like we see for people in the property tax, which impacts, you know, a far larger percentage of individuals of the county. So, and it's also a vehicle that the county uses to fund, you know, 14, 15 million dollars, and we put it towards, we don't put it in the general fund, we put it in services like the health, like the health center, community mental health, general assistance. So we use it to fund social services. And it, in some ways, it's just a transfer of, a tax that transfers wealth from wealthy individuals to help the needy population of the county and their social services.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Boyle?
Yeah, I think, of course, we all very, we feel very similar about the inheritance tax, even though it's something that tends to affect wealthy folks more than anybody. It does affect anybody who has any type of inheritance coming. I think, to be honest, what frustrates me the most is that we do, we are mandated as a county to fund a lot of services by the state. And so, to be told, you have to pay for this, we're telling you, you have to do this, but you have to have the citizens in your county cover the cost of this, to me, that's the most frustrating thing. So, the inheritance tax is used currently, the funding from that, is used to pay for those, for things that are social services, some of them funded, some of them unfunded. But the bottom line is, I really do feel like we have to have a replacement from the state, some type of, some parity where they're covering their unfunded mandates. And that, to be honest, is the reason why I oppose taking the inheritance tax away for the time being. I think once we have it funded, once we have those types of things funded, I think we would all, I'm sure, 100%, we would all be on board with removing that. But just to know that that's a funding mechanism for some of our social services, which is not, it's shaky ground, I know. At the same time, I feel like we really do need support from the state on this, especially when they're talking about the windfall they have from ARPA money right now. So, until that inheritance, the goal is for this inheritance tax to be phased out or completely eliminated, the least the state could do is help us with these social programs until we're using the windfall of ARPA money that they have to make up the difference.
Any other questions or comments? There was a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Friend abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes.
All right. No other legislation at this point. I, we do, we probably, again, from here forward, have various ones that we'll put on. And Marcos, just to make note, the one from Mr. Reed on the noxious weed funding 218, I think we'll put on for next week. So with that, we do have need for an executive session for personnel litigation and contract negotiations. But before we go into executive session, Ms. Raquel would like a photo with the board. And so, let's do a motion to go into executive session for those purposes. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote. And then we'll take our photo.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn passes five to zero. Commissioner Friend... And who else didn't vote? Commissioner Friend is absent. Motion passes six to zero. We're adjourned at 10:52 a.m. Do you want to vote yes to adjourn?
Yeah.
All right. I'll amend that. Motion passes seven to zero.